Gone 10 o'clock and we have a few just normal course of events, things to get out of the way first. So I think we'll go ahead and get the meeting started. And so I'll do this as a call to order and establishing a quorum. We have all of the committee members available to us today. And I do not have an additional chairman's report this morning. We've got plenty on our review process ahead of us. So I think what we'll do is launch right into that. But first, of course, we've got public comment. And Haley, do we have any public comment on items other than those things on the agenda?
I do not have anything for general public comment, but I do have an item to read at 4B.
Okay, thank you. With that being said, then we'll move on to the consent agenda. And I'll ask if there are any comments or adjustments or corrections that anyone has to offer regarding the consent agenda, which is for the approval of the February 18 and the March 18 meeting minutes for regular meeting and for special meeting minutes. Well, not hearing anything then.
We approve them as written.
And all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. We'll move on then to regular business. And Ms. Duffield, there was the regular, the 4A regular business, which is receipt update on financial projects. And that was a little generic. And then it covered a couple of subjects that you were going to address for us, just to bring us up to speed with things that are in process. So I will turn that over to you, please.
Okay, sorry, I didn't unmute. It didn't work right. Okay, so a quick update on the audit. So for the 1718 audit, the audit report was finalized. And Mr. Bruner is currently working with the State Controller's Office to get updated information into the State Controller's report. So he's working through that dialogue. And then moving forward to the audit for 1819, we are going to be working on a schedule and hopefully we'll get something going in the latter part of June to get that started. So we are moving forward on that as well. And then as far as our other big project in finance, the implementation of the new financial system. So we're actively working with a consultant from Tyler Technologies to hold data during a billing period. So they want to look at our utility billing data. Through the process, there are some things that they would want to look at and have their engineering staff look at. So we're trying to get those items in place right now and develop a small agreement with the consultant to be in our system and pull data. So we're working through that. We're hoping that that can happen next week. But it is dependent if we can get an agreement in place with that consultant before that time. So if it doesn't happen this billing cycle, we will do it at the end of June, the beginning of July, when we bill again. So that is my update on the project in finance. And I would be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Anyone have questions? Ted?
Yeah, thinking about the audit, if we don't start until late June, it's not going to be complete until August, September, something like that.
Correct.
Which means that we will be delayed starting the 1920 audit as well. When, when do we expect that we will be out of the auditing cycle?
That is a very good question. I cannot answer it this time. I hope that we will be back on track with the 1920 audit. But, you know, it's dependent on others. So.
Is there a reason, is there a reason that he gave that he can't start now? I'm assuming it's him. I mean, not you.
Well, I have things that I have to do as well. So I have to be able to have like two weeks of uninterrupted time to get the things I need to get done before he can start. And I just can't do that when I'm right in the middle of budget. You know, our budget cycle is embarking on us. The COVID event happened and, you know, we weren't prepared for that. So, you know, all the factors that are happening in our environment, you know, like I said, I've been in the office every single day.
No, enough said. Enough said. Don't worry. I just thought it was more him, but I.
No, no, I mean, I still have to balance his schedule because, you know, he had to, he was delayed a little bit in getting the items resolved with the State Controller's Office because he is in his tax cycle. So, you know, it's a small office and it's, it's a balance. So we're doing the best we can to get our schedules aligned. And because I don't want him to come out all the way out here if he's going to wait on me to produce stuff. When he comes out here, I need to have, you know, stuff ready and waiting for him. So I just need to have the time to do that.
Any other questions? From anyone? Okay. Thank you, Pam. I will tech back with you. Haley, I'm assuming that there probably isn't anything from the, from the participants in terms of questions for us at this point.
There is not.
Okay, thank you. We'll move on to 4B then, discussing the capital improvement project budget reallocations and considering approval of staff recommendations. And Haley, you had indicated before that there was a public comment in regards to this.
Yes, I have a public comment from Christine Heinrichs. And it says, to the Finance Committee, I asked the Finance Committee to revise the staff recommendation on the 99,990 water system consulting contract and charge the entire amount to the EWS SWF fund. The staff recommendation that the cost be divided between the water fund and the EWS SWF fund is inappropriate, as the project is required not by the urban water management plan, but to satisfy the technical requirements of the coastal development permit for the EWS SWF. At the April 22 RNI Committee meeting, Utilities Director Ray D'Enzo explained that the data and the information for the UWMP could be provided in-house by district staff. With several new employees and Mr. D'Enzo's credentials in water system management, the district has well-staffed to research and write that report. As he said, the higher level of technical data that WSC can provide is not needed for the UWMP, but for the EWS SWF CDP application. Please charge the entire $99,990 cost of this project to the EWS SWF as appropriate and accurately reflecting the reality of why this consultant is being hired. The Finance Committee is struggling with Cambria's stretch finances. And being accurate in how costs are ascribed will help the committee and the board understand Cambria's financial situation. Christine Heinrichs.
Thank you, Haley. And thank Ms. Haley and Ms. Heinrichs for her public comment. We will go ahead and move forward to the review of the item 4B. And Pam, again, I'll ask you to introduce the item, please.
Okay, thank you. So item 4B is to request the Finance Committee to review and discuss the capital improvement project budget reallocations and consider approval of staff recommendations. So our request is that you approve to move forward to the board to budget adjustments. The first budget adjustment is related to the previous budget adjustment we had done to purchase the emergency generator. So our assumption for that purchase was a little less than what the actual cost was. So there is a little difference. A budget adjustment needs to be done. It's just a cleanup item, just so that our budget and our actual expenses align in the capital project area. So that budget adjustment would come from the SCADA system, and it would be reallocated to the generator. And that's $1,449. That item is also you're going to see again when we look at the third quarter report, because that will be included as the third quarter budget adjustment. And the other item that we're requesting is that an additional $24,902 be allocated in the SWF fund for the Urban Water Management Plan update. That is an overall contract of $95,000 that will be presented to the board for approval in, in May. And we do need a budget adjustment in the SWF fund because that was not budgeted. In the water fund, the portion of their budget, we think with all the savings that are in services and supplies, that there's adequate budget in that fund. And there's no budget adjustment that is necessary. So with that, I would be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Well, I have a question.
Do we?
The points that Ms. Heinrichs brought up as far as the allocation between the water and the SWF, could you go into that as to, you know, why the majority of it is going to water and why this 25,000 portion is going to the SWF? And it does look like most of the reasoning for this is for the permit that we're trying to get, you know, for the coastal, the coastal permit.
So it is, it is a water, an urban water management plan update. And that's primarily out of the water fund. We budgeted that out of the water fund. The initial plan that they did in 2015 was also from the water fund, was where the budget came from. There is a small component that is related to the CDP permit. So that is the small component that is being isolated. And those funds are being earmarked to the SWF fund. And that is the 24,900 that's in the budget.
So the 75,088 would have taken place whether or not we were going for a permit for the SWF or not. Okay.
Right. It's a, it's a five-year update that, that we're required to do. So we're doing the five-year update.
Good. Answers that.
Any other questions that anyone has? Carol?
Can this be done in-house, this report? Or have you seen the contract? Do we know that it's going to come in at that exact rate?
So Mr. D'Enzo, the Utilities Manager, he had an extensive discussion with the RNI Committee at the April 20, what date was it? I think it was the 22nd. It was last Wednesday. And he provided the entire schedule from the consultant. So there's task items, you know, with exactly what the consultant will be doing. And this is their proposal. It will be a 99,990 not to exceed contract. So, and, you know, if you look back to the RNI Committee meeting, you'll see the schedule from the consultant. And it's very specific on what items are considered updating the water, the urban water management plan, and which items are related to the SWF.
Thank you.
Pam, is this, is this consultant the same one that has drawn up this plan in the past?
No, it is a different consultant. It's WSC.
This, this, is this thrown out for bid? Or is it a competitive bid item?
It went out to bid, yes. The RNI Committee worked with staff to develop the RFP. And so just this last RNI Committee meeting on April 22, they reviewed the consultant's proposal and approved it to come forward to your committee. And once your committee approves the budget adjustment, it'll go before the board to award the contract in May.
In May, okay.
So one, one thing to consider, if, if some folks would like a deeper dive on this, I really would suggest either listening to the RNI Committee meeting from this last time, or look at the staff report for that specific item that they addressed as point of reference. WSC, one of the individuals who's going to be interacting with us for the UWMP portion of this actually is on the committee that developed the ground rules and framework for that report. So we, we have, we have information from the source, as it were, for being successful in an initial application, in an initial providing of this report in its requirements. At least that's what was detailed within that information. So again, a deep dive, you may want to consider looking at those two things. Ted?
Can I move to approve this one?
Ted had a question first, I think.
One more question. It's probably as much a comment as a question. I assume that the work is actually going to be primarily done in 2021. The, the 2020 slash 21 time period. So this contract will actually not be spent until then. So is this, are we really just basically encumbering funds that would, would be carried forward to the next fiscal year?
That's correct. Because if we award a contract in a particular fiscal, fiscal year, we should have the budget to support that contract. So that's why we're bringing this to your committee. We brought it to RNI, and it would go to the board as such.
Thank you.
And Mary, I think you were going to make a motion.
Right. I'd move that we approve the staff recommendation to adjust the capital project budgets.
I hear a second.
I'll second.
Second by Ted? And all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And you know what? I think what I'm going to do is ask people to raise their hands for the screens, just so I make sure that the voices that I'm hearing relate to the question. Thank you very much. And so that passes 4-0.
You want Marvin's?
Yeah, I didn't see Marvin's hand.
Marvin, could you hold up your hand, please?
It's up. So yes, mine is an affirmative vote.
Thank you. I will ask for the verbal response. Thank you all. Okay, we'll move forward then to item 4B, or excuse me, 4C. And again, Ms. Duffield, you're in the controller's seat.
I'm in the hot seat today.
Yes, you are.
Okay, so item 4C is the review of the third quarter budget report and staff recommendations to adjust capital project budget. So as we just talked about in the previous item, we have two budget adjustments that we're requesting, one in the water fund and one in the SWF fund. In addition to that, there was previous action by your committee to support another item, which was the debt service payment. And, sorry, I'll step back. So in the wastewater fund, there was $95,000 earmarked in the budget for the first year debt service payment for the Vactra tract. And at your last committee meeting, you supported staff's recommendation to let that fall to reserves during, at the end of the fiscal year, because we would not make a debt service payment in 1920. So that, in addition to these two budget adjustments, will be included as we review the wastewater fund. So just to give you a heads up on that. So if we turn to the general fund summary page of the budget, which is on 16, I think it's on 16 for everybody. We had a page numbering challenge at the very end of the day yesterday. So hopefully, it's still, the general fund summary is on page 16 for everyone. So if we look at that page, we are noticing that on line 28, and it would be column R, our overall surplus that is anticipated for the general fund budget, which is fire, facilities, and resources, parks, wrecked open space, and administration is slated to be around $370,000. So the variables that could change that projection at this point would be if any of our property tax money doesn't come in as planned. Currently, as of yesterday, we have received 80%, 87% of what we anticipate for our property tax budget. So we do keep actively seeing those large tax come in over the last week since property taxes were due on April 10. So hopefully, in over the next month or so, we will get that budget up to 100% or somewhere there close to that. The other variable that is currently going on is more related to the fire department. And it's just more an expenditure item for them and all this protective gear that they are needing to purchase to make their employees safe during any kind of call that they receive. So, you know, we might see by the end of the fiscal year, a little, you know, some blind items in their budget might be exceeded due to them having to purchase protective equipment for their staff. Admin, we're purchasing more, you know, we've purchased a little more of disinfectant supplies and things like that that we would normally purchase, you know, during the year, you know, just to try to keep everybody safe and keep everything wiped down. We're also going to be putting some plexiglass up at our front counter so that the public is safe and we are safe when our office does reopen. And that is happening with an existing budget line. So, you know, we shouldn't see a staff, you know, an overage to make that happen. But, you know, we're still weighing all the variables that are required that just come down the pike, you know, every week. So just to keep in mind, those things could change at the end of the fiscal year, when, you know, things are more certain and our revenues have really come in and our expenses have been paid out. So I don't have any real concerns in the general fund at this point. It's all looking pretty good. And we have a nice, good cushion for anything that should be coming down the pike.
Oh, may I ask a question, Pam?
Sure.
Curious, is there, is there anything at this point that we might be able to identify that may have a low risk of happening, but is something that could impact or consume what this surplus represents? Or are we actually looking at perhaps some, some element of money that could be available for doing some of the things that we need for the Vets Hall?
Right. Anything that comes that we have in surplus at the end of the fiscal year would go back into our reserves. And those would be available to rebudget in the future, you know, in future budget years, whether it happens in 2021 or the next fiscal year, it definitely would be available for budgeting in future periods.
Okay, thank you. Let me get rid of that.
So Pam, what I, what you were saying about the, the taxes, that, that was actually my question. And is this typical that you'd be at 87% two weeks after the property taxes are due?
Yeah, it's pretty typical for the given, given year. I've looked back to the last couple of years. When we get the surge of property taxes, we get the surge in December to January, and then we get the surge in April to May.
Okay.
But we've been getting some nice large tax that have come in over the last week. So that's a really good sign that people were able to pay their property taxes. That's a good thing.
And I have a question also. Obviously, this lockdown we're in, with no tourism now, and, and most businesses operating minimally, have we given some thought to what impact this might have on fourth quarter revenues? Or can we even estimate what, what the impact might be?
I'll be getting to that when I talk about the enterprise fund.
Okay.
So hold that thought.
I can't make it go away.
Any other questions related to the general fund at this point?
Nope. So then let's move forward to the enterprise fund. Sorry, I should have tapped my handout.
The summary should be on like 44, 45s in that range, depending on which copy you may have of the.
Yeah. Now, the enterprise summary, I have it on page 44. But again, if you have the most recent packet, it might be on page 45 or 46. I think they paged up a couple numbers. So again, focusing on the middle of the page where we see operating surplus and deficit, which is line 31, we're focusing on our budget variance, which is column S. So line 31, column S. So that is the proposed surplus that could be recognized in all of the enterprise funds combined. So that would be a combination of water, SWF, SWF capital, and wastewater. And again, the variable to that is, you know, our next billing cycle. If, you know, I did not make any provisions in this to deviate from our budget. I just really am not comfortable without knowing, you know, what our next billing cycle looks like to come up with a projection. You know, I don't want to say the sky is falling. If the sky is not falling, you know, I would rather put an accurate assumption out there. And I will be able to do that. I won't be able to do that on paper for the third quarter report when it goes to the board. But by the time the board meeting happens to discuss the third quarter report, I will have that information and be able to speak to it verbally and say what, you know, what impact having, you know, our commercial industry closed down for a month and a half has had to our rates. So at this point, I don't have that because we haven't done our billing. We are doing reads over the next three days. So, you know, you'll see the staff come out and about through town doing the reads. And then by the end of the first week of May, I should have an idea about, you know, how our rates, you know, what revenue we lost due to the shelter at home and the hotels not operating and the restaurants not operating to their full capacity like they have been. So moving forward to the water fund.
Before, before you get there, just in rough numbers, how much of the revenue for the funds comes from commercial versus residential?
Approximately one-third. So one-third of our revenue is generated from our commercial lodging and our commercial customers.
So we could, we could easily see a drop of 20% or more in this period, and probably something similar to that, maybe even a little bit more in, in the final two months.
Correct. Yeah. And just the variable that might offset that a little bit is that there's more people in residential homes, you know, that are using water. They're home, their kids are home, you know, they're utilizing. You know, they're utilizing more water than they would use on a normal basis. So, you know, I don't think based on our production numbers that we've been hearing from utilities that it's an offset. But it's definitely, you know, going to be a higher. I'm sure the residential billings will be higher, you know, and that could offset a little bit of the loss of commercial and lodging. But it's of course not going to offset it in totality, so.
Well, based on the amount of toilet paper that's been hoarded, I'd expect the wastewater to be way up.
I don't know, it could be water usage too.
It all starts with water usage.
There's another variable too that we, we want to keep in mind is that we've also got the support personnel for the commercial area of our economy that have either been workload laid off or the hours cut significantly. And this can't help but also play into possibly how our revenues are going to be affected by that too in their inability to maybe pay for a while until we do get back to some type of balance.
Correct, so our revenue stream for the last billing cycle that we did, which was the month of January and February that we billed in early March, just about the time the shelter at home order came into place. We did have a total so far of 60 customers that requested payment plans for us. And that's a value of around $60,000. So we will see that deferred revenue come in over a longer period than normally we would see just because of the governor's order to not shut customers off, you know, during this time. And then the board's action at a special meeting to waive late charges. So we're allowing a longer length of time for those bills to get paid knowing, you know, everybody has a unique situation. We're working with those customers that need an extended time period to pay. We have good news to report that this week we've had five of those customers pay off their payment plans. So, you know, that's a good sign that people, you know, maybe they just needed a couple of extra weeks.
Yeah.
You know, to, to kind of figure all this out because, you know, everybody was kind of hit over the head with this situation and it, you know, we couldn't really plan for what happened. So, um, so it's a really good sign that there are people recovering a little bit and able to rearrange their financials, you know, arrangements and, you know, get the things paid like essential services. So that was a really good sign for me that we did get a few payment plans that got paid in full. So we'll keep monitoring the situation and we'll keep working with any customer that calls us and has that request to extend their payment term.
Cheryl, I think you had a question.
I do have a question. Pam, a while back, we implemented a procedure that if a tenant can't pay their bill, the owner is held accountable. Are the owners being notified that the tenant, if these are tenant-related? Are they being notified that they are, how's that being implemented?
Right, so if, if a tenant cannot pay their bill, we notify the owner. So we're, we are operating on that same premise. Generally, what we do is we send a demand for payment at the time that the customer is due to be shut off. But because we are not going through that process right now, we won't be notifying owners that tenants are unpaid until later in June.
Okay, but they will be notified?
Yes, we send out dual bills. So we send out a bill to the tenant as a reminder and then we also send out a bill as a courtesy to the owner. So they're also notified.
Okay.
So, question Pam, the, there certainly are people who may not have discussed a payment plan option with you who may not yet have paid their bills. Do we have a, do we have a number on potentially the quantity of folks that may be in that situation?
So when we did our last, when we did our last billing at the end of the due date, you know, normally when we would send our late notices out, which is 10% of your current charges, we had 198 customers at that point that had late bills. That was a little low as compared to previous billing cycles. So in July and August, we had 242 late notices. In September, October billing, we had 261 late notices. And in November, December, we had 206 notices. So, you know, our overall late notices were a little bit low. But, you know, again, we're, you know, going to see that it's going to be a longer period of time before some of those customers may be paying their bills.
So I'm assuming that 198 reduces over time as they either may contact you for a payment plan or they actually do pay the bill?
That's correct, right. On the 12th of April, we sent out reminder notices to those 198 customers just to remind them that their bill was still due. And we have been receiving, you know, actively, we've been receiving payments every day. So if I ran that report again, which I have not done this week, I'm sure that number is significantly reduced.
Okay, so all indicators are pointing themselves in a direction that it's not taking us further, further down the rabbit hole.
Right, right. I think people are trying really hard to, you know, get their finances aligned and hopefully we'll continue to see the payment plan, you know, arrangements being kept up. You know, we, we generally give people two, we make them put a deposit down and then we give them two different periods of time where they can pay to pay off that balance. But we've extended that to three. So it's given them a little bit more time if they need to, you know, figure out what's happening. What's going to compound that is going to be the next billing cycle that we send out. So, you know, they may think they have it under control and then now they've been home, their kids have been home and hopefully they've been conserving the whole time and hopefully they don't have a larger water bill than they think they should have. So, you know, we'll continue to monitor that through, you know, the next couple of months as well.
Right, okay. Are there any other questions as far as this summary position for the, for the enterprises?
So real quick, let's just go into each one of the enterprise funds individually. If, if you don't mind really quick. So for the water fund itself, we're looking at an operating surplus of $298,000. And that's assuming again that we get all of our revenues as anticipated. So if I have, I have a little scenario here just to throw out at you for just your information. So based on the billing period of January and February, we billed out $1,120,000. So making the assumption on one quarter of those bills, you know, if we reduce the revenue by say 25% going into the next billing cycle, what kind of dollars could that possibly equate to? So for the water fund, that could be a potential reduction in revenue of $117,000. So if that were to happen, we're showing an anticipated surplus of $298,000. If, if we don't have $100,000 or $117,000 to bill out because of the, you know, reduction in our community, we would still be okay. We still have enough of a cushion to wither potentially that to happen. So I just wanted to point that out that, you know, it's a good thing that some of the capital projects maybe haven't been done and, you know, maybe things came in less expensive than what was anticipated. But at least we're showing some sort of a cushion in case we have a revenue shortfall that was unanticipated when we did the budget. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention.
Okay, Ted?
Yeah. When you're talking about the $298,000, you're talking about compared to budget as opposed to the actual estimate, or the estimated actual is a $494,000 surplus. So, so it's, the situation is even better, I guess, than, than what you're, you're saying. The problem that we have to keep in mind is that the SWF is planning to operate at a deficit. And so the, the surplus in Fund 11 has to cover some of the deficit in SWF. So, so the, the analysis really needs to be sort of a compound analysis.
Correct, and you're correct, it is column R, sorry, not column S. Column R is our projection. But I just wanted to give you an idea of, you know, our revenue stream and if we did not get the revenue that we anticipated, you know, what is the impact of that? You know, we're still trying to have all those factors known, but that's the best guess that I have at this point in time.
I have a question.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, Cheryl.
Pam, when you got the tax revenue from the county, every year, isn't there an increase?
The county gives us what the increase they expect it to be and I haven't received that information yet for 2020, 2021. I think it was about a 3% increase. Or 3.5, it might have been 3.6.
So there has been, you are receiving increases?
Yes, right. And we try to, we try to budget what the county assumes we're going to get. You know, we try to factor that into our budget. So we will be doing that very soon in the next fiscal year's budget as well.
Thank you.
Okay, so are we ready to move on to SWF?
Absolutely.
So for SWF, I'm going to go back to the summary page here on the enterprise fund summaries. So for SWF, for the operations fund, we're expecting a surplus of 200, oh, sorry, I'm in the wrong column again Ted, of $226,000. And then we have a deficit to offset in the capital fund. So again, if we have some revenue that doesn't come in, so for SWF, a quarter of the revenues of a billing cycle is approximately $47,700. So, you know, just kind of keeping that in mind, if we have that offset, then we don't have really a surplus in SWF. We will be in a negative situation. We will, like Ted said, be relying on the water fund to support the SWF operations at the end of the year. And then on the wastewater fund, sorry, I forgot to turn my phone on, do not disturb. So for the wastewater fund, I am on page 62. The 62 wastewater, it could be 62 or it could be 64, depending which packet you are looking at. It is the wastewater fund summary, the fund level analysis. So if you're looking at wastewater and you're looking at line 34, or sorry, line 24, column R, the projected surplus for wastewater is $425,000. So there's a couple of variables that we talked about that are kind of making this number larger than anticipated and that's the $95,000 for the vector truck that will not be spent this year. And then also, if you go into the detail pages in debt service, you will also see zeros for the crane truck purchase. So I reviewed the debt schedule. At the time we did the budget, I had a draft debt schedule of when we would receive the truck because, you know, remember we had approval to purchase it, but then it was non-order and we didn't get it until June of last year. So by the time the loan documents went into place and all that, you know, the loan closed and all that, it was actually into the month of July. So our first debt service payment for the crane truck will not be until 2021. It's like in mid-July of 2021. So if you're looking at the budget detail pages, you will see that those are zeros and that's why. So then there's a little bit more surplus that will be anticipated as well because those will just be put into reserves and they will be budgeted the very next year.
Yes, good.
Well, that's a, I think you kind of answered what I was going to ask, that the contract is drawn up in 2020. So wouldn't that be funds that are encumbered going forward as opposed, and shown spent as opposed to, you know, zeros?
We don't encumber debt service. We only encumber services and supplies. So debt service, we just budget on the books the year that it's to occur. We don't necessarily encumber that. But we're going to be putting those funds down to reserves, you know, at the end of the year that are not spent. So it'll just add to that. It was just a point I was making that it's not only 95,000, but it's the additional debt service that we won't be paying in principal and interest for that truck yet. So as far as the revenue shortfall that we could anticipate for wastewater, we talked about water in SWF already. So if our revenues were reduced by 25%, that could approximately be $115,000. So that would definitely offset the bottom line that you're seeing in surplus for us, for wastewater as well as water in SWF. So that concludes my report and I would be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Dwayne?
These figures that we're looking at here, they do not include the anticipated rate increase that's going, that's proposed to go into effect July 1st. These do not have any of that built into the projection, is that true?
Um, I think what you asked, I couldn't hear all of it, you were breaking up. So I think what you're asking is the, the revenues do not include the rate increases slated for July 2020. Is that what you're asking?
Yes.
That's correct. So these are the rates per the Bartle and Wells study that would go into effect July 1st, 2019. The next rate increase, if that's approved by your committee and the board, that would go into effect in the next budget cycle in 2020, 21.
That's kind of important to understand before we get to the next.
Correct.
So Dwayne, I'm not sure why, but you're cutting out an awful lot.
Maybe I had something covered up. Is that better? I had the paperwork. Sorry about that.
That is a problem. Okay, so. Okay, so do we have any additional comments at all regarding the budget review or any questions or observations? I will ask before we move on. Haley, were there any comments from the public to, to take regarding this agenda item?
There is no public comment for this item.
Okay, thank you. If that's the case, then I'll entertain a motion to accept item 4C for review of the third quarter budget report and the recommended adjustments to the capital projects. I'll make a motion. Mary, that was you?
Yes.
Okay, and seconded by Cheryl.
Correct.
Okay, and your vote, please? An aye?
Aye.
And Marvin, I did hear a aye from you, is that correct?
Aye.
Excellent, thank you. And so that's passed unanimously 4-0. Thank you.
5-0. 5-0.
I'm sorry, 5-0, yes.
Can I go back to 4C for just a moment?
Well, you may not.
Maybe.
Sorry, I forgot, I forgot to talk about these attachments that were added and, and why we revised the agenda yesterday. So I attached for you at the end of the budget worksheet, the original CIP list and the priority list that went to the board when the budget was adopted in August. And then I attached, and those are three pages, and they start somewhere around page 70, I believe.
69, I think, but yeah.
Okay. And then I attached three more pages, which are a little more colorful. And those pages are what RNI and Utilities Department have been working together to provide a little bit better information on, you know, what the ranking is, when the project was budgeted, the cost of the project, the status, is it done? Is it not done? You know, kind of what the status of each project is. So we provided that update. And those at the top say they were revised to 26 to 2020. Um, at the, at the last RNI meeting on April 22nd, they further updated these pages. So when I provided this update for February 26, 2020 pages, I didn't provide the most current. So the vice chair of RNI reached out to us on Monday yesterday and requested that we add a further revised document. So those are the pages that you received news. So you should have received three additional pages and they should start out with the revised date of April 1st. And there wasn't a lot of information that was revised more. It was more fiscal year in that very first column, that column A, you'll notice. They added a little bit more color coding and a fiscal year component into that on when the project was budgeted and when it was completed. So, sorry, I, I forgot to mention what those attached pages were for and why we amended that item yesterday.
Thank you, Pam, and, and I appreciate you doing that. I, it, it went by me to mention this at all because I've seen this format several times already. And so it, it kind of went by me that others may not have seen it yet. I really have to commend the RNI committee and specifically Karen Dean in terms of how this report was expanded to be able to act as a tracking mechanism and something that's easily visible, that actually even can be produced in a, in a large format for display at board meetings and those kinds of things. The only thing that I will caution about it, and I don't know whether this is something that is actually a possible thing to do within the constraints of, of this particular format, but the actual cost column, as this lists items that would be executed in year-over-year activities, the actual costs when they're shown in their, in their summaries are cost for whatever that time period is. It isn't a year, a fiscal year specific identification. It's a summary of actual cost. So if you have a project that's crossing year over year, you're going to see a summation of cost rather than incrementally what was being incurred on the, on a fiscal year basis. So I don't know if we can discuss further whether there's some easy way to be able to accommodate that within the report format. But just for right now, as a caution, if you're using this information or looking at it, there's the possibility that you have year-over-year data for the actual cost. And I, I will go back to 4C again also in, in one respect. It, it was a little dense in the things that we were taking the motion on, and I just want to make sure that everyone's comfortable with this. And please provide some feedback, Haley, as necessary. But in the actual agenda item staff report, the last paragraph there actually is addressing three different items that this agenda item is taking into consideration. One is the third quarter report. The second is the capital improvement value being taken to fund reserves. And then the third is approving the capital project budget adjustments. And I just want to make sure that everyone's satisfied with the fact that we just took a single motion on all three of those items. Haley, is there any reason to consider doing anything different than that?
I think it's fine as long as it's outlined in the minutes that it's for those three items.
Okay, fine. And, yeah, okay. So whatever we need to do then, please, for the, for the meeting minutes in defining what the motion was, that all three of those items are annotated. So we have it for reference.
Someone could even repeat the motion to make it clear for Mary as well.
Certainly. I, I'd be happy to do that, Mary, if you would like clarification on that. So the, the motion would be to approve the third quarter buffer budget report and staff recommendations to adjust the capital project budgets and to move unused capital improvement to fund reserves in the wastewater fund. So I think it was that last part that really wasn't something that was obvious in the motion statement. Would that be satisfactory for you? You're on mute.
Okay. It works. It works for me.
Okay, fine.
And is everybody okay with voting that way? I mean.
Right, so now I'll take it back out and say, you know, we'll be happy to do another vote if that's okay or you satisfied with that adjustment to the motion. I guess we should.
I'll make a motion again to do it based on what Cindy just said.
Okay. And Cheryl?
I'll second.
Second that? Okay, fine. So I will ask again for this adjusted vote, just to make sure that we've got all the Ts and Is and so forth. Marvin, how about you?
Aye.
Excellent, thank you, 5-0. Sorry for having to go through that cleanup process. I should have had an eye on that. Okay, so actually, we're moving on to our item 4D. And I'll check with you, Haley, do we have any public comment relating to agenda item 4D?
We do not have any public comment for this item.
Okay, thank you very much. And to round out your, your daily performance, Ms. Duffield, I will turn agenda item 4D to you, please.
Okay, item 4D. This is for discussion and consideration of recommendations to approve water and wastewater rate increases that are prescribed in the Prop 218, actions approved by the Board of Directors in May 2019. So if you recall, we've had a series of rate increases. The first rate increase went into effect October 4th, 2018. And that increased the water rates by 15%, the SWF rates by 16%, and the wastewater rates by 18%. At the time that was adopted by the board, the Bartles and Wells study back at the end of July, that went into effect October 4th, 2018, the board also requested that they review the rates annually before the rates go into effect each year, just to ensure that the rates are still needed. And if they aren't needed, they can make some adjustments to those rates going forward. So to follow up with that, in May of last year, in May of 2019, an action was taken to the board to review the rates that were slated to increase for the 2019, 2020 budget cycle. And the board approved increasing rates as follows. Water increased 10%. SWF increased 14%. And wastewater increased 15%. So that brings us to today. And we need to review the rate increases that are slated in the Bartle Wells study for the next phase of the rate increase. So keep in mind, the first three years were the big meaty rate increases. And from here forward, they are, they are just a static 4% across all the funds up until, I believe, it's 27, 28. And they go down to 3%, which is the last year of the 10-year rate increase study in the plan. So what is proposed in this study for July 1st, 2020 rates? It would be the water fund at 5% increase, the SWF fund at 12%, and the wastewater fund at 12% as well. How that equates to dollars? So in the water fund, a 5% increase would equate to approximately $188,000 of additional revenues. In SWF, a 12% increase would be approximately $149,000 in revenues. And in wastewater, a 12% would be approximately $356,000 in revenues. So I've included, for your information, there's, and for the public, we've included all the past board actions, the action that reviewed the study on July 12th, 2018, the rate increase packet for resolution that was approved on October 4th, 2018. And then the resolution and the package that included the rate increase last July 1st, that was on May 23rd of 2019. All that information was made available to your committee and the public. And we will do the same when we move forward with the board action in May. So, you know, we're still, you know, I know you, we just reviewed the third quarter report and we do have some surpluses that are, you know, potentially out there that we may see. But I want you to all, please, keep in mind that, you know, we have substantial negative reserves in each one of the funds. And we need to move forward with the Bartle well plan as planned to get forward to the next level and get us in the financial situation and the financial health that these enterprise funds should be in. So I hope that your board will support these rate increases moving forward. And I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Ted?
I guess the, the first question I have is, what would be the impact on typical customers bill with these rate increases?
So... I don't think I have that in my worksheet. I can do a quick calculation. So currently, the bimonthly residential is $34.90. The SWF bimonthly is $18.08. And the wastewater is $82.20. And then they all have volume charges as well that would go up.
So I, you know, I, I guess I'm, I was, I was trying to follow the, the numbers as you were reading them off that the increases would bring in in total revenue. And seems like the, it was kind of around $600,000.
93.
Right, those are directly from the Bartle Wells. So if you.
And if we have, if we have 400 or 4,000 customers, then we're talking about $175 a year impact on, on the, on the average customer.
Potentially, right.
Now, so that's, you know, so that's, that's my first question. I, I think that would be important information to include in the staff report to the board. This, and more precisely done than my off-the-top-of-the-head kind of number. The second question is, have you done it? Well, I guess, is there any flexibility about delaying increases? And following that, have you done any sensitivity analysis on what would happen if the increases were delayed to some extent?
So I would not recommend to change the Bartles and Wells study and delay any rate increases because then we just move our plan out. This is our last year with any type of the significant rate increase in SWF and wastewater. And if we postpone those revenue sources, we postpone capital projects happening. It's critical that our revenue source, especially in, in wastewater, stays per the plan because we are already in process with the PG&E SST plan. We know that in fiscal year 2021, we will be writing PG&E a very large check. And we need to ensure we have adequate funding to do that.
I, I, I understand that. And I'm, I am and have been a real supporter of the CCSD getting its financial house in order, which includes having the, the income necessary to be able to operate effectively. However, this is a very unusual time. Just walking along the Moonstone Boardwalk or going down Main Street, it's clear that not only business owners, but all of the people who worked in these, who work in these businesses, who are our friends and neighbors, are really substantially hurting. And I, I, I think it would be, you know, it would be worth considering whether a delay is possible to try to provide some relief for the, the people who are hit so hard by the, the current stay-at-home orders. You know, at least doing some sensitivity, putting together a, some detail about what, you know, what would be the district's approach to delaying things? to delaying things? What would be delayed? What would not be delayed? What, you know, how could we operate? Where can we pull the belt tight? I mean, these are all... This is not an ordinary time. And, you know, I think it would be... It would be difficult to just support an increase without knowing more about what, you know, what could be done to try to help people who, right now, are very much in need. And, you know, the other thing, being someone who's living on money that was saved and invested, I can tell you that I've got a lot less flexibility in what I can spend on a daily or weekly or monthly basis than I had before the crash of the stock markets. So, you know, I think all the way around the community right now, we have difficulty. And, you know, it just seems like we should at least be considering that.
Well, there's also another aspect to consider, the uncertainty of our revenue stream right now. You know, we have projected surpluses and revenues in each of the funds, but that may disappear as we see what really happens with revenues and trying to estimate what our 2021 revenues are going to be. So there's just an incredible amount of uncertainty trying to decide what to do with these rate increases.
Dwayne, I believe you had a question also?
Yes, we might also consider too, in looking at the staff report on this, that this is also considering that the SWF will be in operation for two months out of the year, you know, going forward. That is something that can also be changed as well. In other words, this was, you know, implemented as an emergency situation. And as long as we have adequate water supplies, I cannot see why we would need to go to the extra expense of operating the facility over a two-month period for the next several years or until at least this situation that we're going through is over. That may be one of the ways that we could cushion the impact, you know, for the ratepayers of Cambria, including, which includes all of us. So in, you know, adding to what Ted said, I have been as big a supporter as I can, you know, as far as wanting to get the infrastructure fixed, that which needs to be replaced, replaced, and also the last two rate increases I supported and voted for. So I am all for keeping the CCSD on a good, strong financial basis. However, this rate increase, with that being said, this rate increase could not come at a worse time as far as our community being in, not only our community, our nation, our state, our county, but our community being in unknown territory. You know, the economic impact of this stay-at-home order, which we are all, you know, doing, you know, to the best of our ability, is having effects upon our local businesses, on our workforce. And we don't know just exactly how deep that's going to be or how long, prolonged, that is going to stay, you know, intact. Just yesterday, you know, the governor came out and said, "California is weeks away from changing the stay-at-home order." So putting a timeframe on this, we know we're still looking at several weeks, if not months, of things possibly being as they are today. So we know everybody's hurting. We know there's a lot of people out of work. And I find it very difficult to support a rate increase, which would go into effect July 1st at this time. I think the board would have the authority to put this off and maybe put it off for three months and let's talk about it again in three months. Or if things haven't changed, we can talk about it again in six months. But at this time, I would have a hard time voting to recommend to the board to implement, put this rate increase in effect at this time, considering what, you know, Pam said, the, what's been felt up to this point as far as the numbers, the number of people that are going to need to pay this utility bill over time. I think we've just seen the tip of the iceberg on that. In other words, things have just started to kick in as to, you know... This was before a lot of people were laid off and a lot of jobs were, at this point, non-existent. A lot of businesses... We drove through town yesterday and drove out to Moonstone, looked at the motel situations. Everything was empty. Weekends are a little bit different. This is not the time to go into that. But financially, economically, we're in an area that's totally unknown. And we're all participating in the pain. In other words, those of us that are lucky enough to be retired, but, you know, to somewhat, we're still on fixed income. And with the financial situation, you know, on Wall Street and around the world and in every area, changes daily. And we've all, I'm sure, taken a hit. So that being said, that's kind of my position unless I hear somebody change my mind on that. I just don't think this is the time to recommend to the board to put rate increases in place.
Okay, just as a... Yeah, just, I just wanted to address one thing as far as the information or the position that Dwayne had relayed, that the item about the SWF not running at all, I think there's a very high probability that the SWF will probably run at some point for some period of time this year, not necessarily because of a function of drought, but because of the need for the UWMP and the CDP and the in-stream water studies that have to be done. Then the Coastal Commission has indicated that there are certain things that they would like to be able to see in place, which would require that the SWF be run for a period of time so the calculations could be done. So that's one thing. So there is something that will happen with that. And the other thing, just as an observation, we need to keep in mind also two things. One is, it isn't a matter of pushing out the rate with the idea that we'll catch up with it later. If we don't use it, we lose it, is basically what it is. And that's the Prop 218. We can't, we can't say push some portion of the rate for this fiscal year and push it out into next year. We can't do that. We can only implement this in the framework that was established. We can implement it at lower rates. But I think the other thing that we need to keep in mind is the idea that somehow the rate, or we need to at least consider the possibility of the rate for each of the individual enterprise areas don't necessarily have to be considered as a whole. In other words, any one of the three rates could be looked at individually or considered individually in some way, either by the percentage or the implementation. Although if we staggered rates at different points of implementation within a fiscal year, I think it would be an absolute rat's nest and headache financially for Pam to be able to track all of that and to align it for budget purposes. So I just wanted to offer that information out just for consideration while we're looking at that. And Cheryl, you had a question?
I do have a question. Cindy, since you clarified the SWF will be running, is it going to be running as a tracer test where the ratepayers are not charged? Or is it going to be running as a service? You don't want...
Cheryl, I don't have any of the specifics of that. I'm sorry that I can't answer that question for you at this point. I don't know the particulars. I just happen to know that there's a high probability that we'll need to use the SWF for a period of time in the coming fiscal year.
My thought on another note, Cindy, is the district needs to tighten its belt. It needs to freeze salaries. It needs to do things. And before it can come to the ratepayers, they need to take charge of their own freezing and doing things to that sort. I cannot, in good conscience, vote for any 1%, 2%, 3% of a rate increase based on what's happening around the state, the world, the events that are current. I can't. And I believe I heard something about PG&E has put aside all rate increases also. Utilities are not increasing rates. So based on what is happening, there's just no way, with my good conscience, I could vote for any form of a rate increase, regardless if it's piecemeal or not. That's me. So that being said, I cannot be in favor of this.
So just for point of reference, the tightening the belt on the salaries and everything, we have little discretion that we can use in that regard because we are predominantly under union contracts.
Well, I don't know...
Just like every other special district in this state.
Well, maybe they shouldn't be hiring more additional employees. I don't know what the answer is, but all I know in good conscience, I cannot support a rate increase at this particular time. That's me.
Okay, so if, yes, Mary?
So a couple of things. One is, and I was going to say this when Ted was talking, just to put it out there. I do think there's a need for a sensitivity analysis of some sort that it takes into account what we're talking about, Dwayne, Cheryl, Ted, myself, and Marvin, just to recognize the situation and so we can give more facts and data to the board. An assessment of where we are and, you know... And I know Pam needs more data in terms of the income, the revenues. But since we are underrunning a little bit, you know, just an analysis to say where we are, I think another analysis to include in the analysis is everybody else has stopped work. So even the things we were going to spend money on, there's a possibility, some of them we couldn't spend if we wanted to because, you know, maybe PG&E can't work either. So I'm just, I think we just need to pause and take a look at it and give that information to the board. I'm a little concerned, you know, I agree this is a once-in-a-lifetime thing, so we need to recognize that. But at the same time, we need to be sensitive to... We don't want to throw the baby out with the bathwater, if that's the right word. If there's something that we could do to delay it, you made a comment that we can decrease it. Can we increase next year's? So we can only go down. So I don't know. I just think we need more data. I'm not hard against a rate increase just from a, it took us this long to get this far. Maybe CCSD can take into account people who can't take the rate increase as easily and put in some things like we're doing with no late payments or payment plans. I don't know. I just think we need more data before we say no rates. Because I think if we say no rates, we are throwing out a lot of good work.
Ted?
Is it possible to do something like approve the rate increase and then suspend it?
We wouldn't want to do that. If they want to not put the rates into effect in a particular billing period, we need to go by billing periods. So I can't just say for three months we're not going to do a rate increase. I would have to have our complete mom system renovated because we cannot do a billing with one month at one rate and one month at another rate.
So then, fine.
For... Right.
Go two months at a time. But, you know, it just is, you know, we've got to be creative about this because this is an extraordinary circumstance. And, you know, I would agree that if we don't implement the rate, it's lost forever, is a bad situation. I, you know, I understand the reality of that. But, you know, we've got to figure out what the district can do to recognize an extraordinary situation.
So I agree, Ted. One thing, I just ran this, you know, very simplistically, but with the monthly billing information, Pam, that you had given of $34.90 with water and $18.08 with SWF and the $82.20 with wastewater. And just incrementally by putting the rates that are out there right now against that, there would end up being, for water, $1.75 per billing period addition. For the SWF, it would be $2.17 per billing period. And of course, the kicker is in the wastewater because of the base that you're calculating against. That would be $9.86 per billing period, which is totaling out to $13.80 in round terms or multiplied by six. That's in the round terms of $85 a year. And I...
But that doesn't include...
There are other elements to that, I realize.
But it doesn't include usage.
But I was trying to get a, I was trying to get some feel for it as we were going along. And what it pointed me to is that the rates for water and for the SWF probably will be the smallest part of anything that we're considering, that the real, the real point of financial impact is going to be with the rate that is applied against wastewater. And the whole reason that the Prop 218 was done was to try to provide financial stability and to provide the funds that were necessary to fix our infrastructure. And the one that was the biggest focus through the whole 218 process was wastewater. So it points to the fact that what's being considered in the rates is most significantly impacted by the rate associated with the wastewater, and that's where we need it the most. So I was just, I just wanted to put that out there for another point of reference or information. Marvin?
Yeah, I realize delaying any of our capital improvement projects and the things that are needed is basically just kicking the can down the road again.
If we haven't shot our foot off yet.
As you said, the wastewater is the one that is most critical. Perhaps we should or could consider going forward with a rate increase on wastewater. But we also know that, as you said, personnel expense under contract is going to increase probably close to what the CPI is, which is, fortunately, inflation has been very low. We're at 2%, 2.5%. Is that... Is that an option to consider going forward with a substantial increase for wastewater and holding the others at the CPI level?
CPI just as a target, not because it's actually going to be the definition for it, right? Because
Right, yeah, right. So it's 2%, 2.5%.
Well, that would, that would be something for consideration. Certainly another, I, I think what a lot of this may boil down to is several of us want some more tangible information in terms of what decisions, one direction or another, may take us and what the impact would be and trying to understand the best path forward in the decision-making. The other, the other piece that is, is making sure we understand too the, the current impact that the community is feeling, which we have a very small perspective to right now in terms of the number of people who have not yet paid their bills. Are people using payment plans, which would indicate that, yeah, that, that folks are having to reassess and reevaluate how they're using their, their money, but they are responding and they are able to satisfy the bills. That tends to be a bit of an intangible too, because you never know where that line is for people that drawn and all of a sudden it starts becoming a much larger impact for them. And Mary, there's something you want to do?
Well, I didn't mean to have you stop your thoughts, so.
No.
So I, I guess a couple of thoughts. I mean, if, I, I know we have rules around the, the rates that we can't raise them, da-da-da. It is an unprecedented time, I guess. Can we inquire as to the flexibility of any change in how that process works? So that, I, I mean, I know, I'm just, I actually was doing a little web searching because everybody's in the same boat, the utilities. And I'm just curious, you know, a little research on what utilities are doing. If they're delaying their payments, are they in the same Prop 218 rules? I just, I think we just have to get, you know, keep being creative around how can we manage this? Because it seems like a delay would be good or better than a no, no increase kind of thing. And I'm just wondering if there's a way to inquire if there's any flexibility in the BARTL wells that, because this is such an, and I keep calling it the BARTL wells, whatever the rules are.
The, the 218 is the 218 and any change to it would require a new 218. So
So if we see that PG&E is delaying their rates, if that's true, I think Cheryl said that, are they in the same boat? We are that they're, I, I'm just not sure how they work.
No, because that
Totally.
This, well, it's a, it's a special. Pam, maybe you're better in, in being able to define that, but it's, it's, it's relative to how taxes can be levied. And in essence, any increase to a special district, any increase to rates would be viewed in the same way, just like any kind of property tax other than a CPI at a county or at a state level for sales tax. That's, it all requires legal change in state.
To date, there's been nothing modified with the Prop 218 process. So for a city, a county or a CSD, in order to charge, you know, an electricity or a water, even a trash charge, wastewater charge, we have to follow the rules of Prop 218. So it's not a good comparison to compare a private utility company against a county, a city or a special district because they have to go to the Public Utilities Commission to raise their rates. They do not go through the Prop 218 process like we are requested to follow. So it's a completely different situation.
So what's the timeliness of having to get this to the board? I mean, is, are we on, what kind of deadline are we on? And what kind of time do we have to do analysis?
No, it, it needs to go to the board in May so that the rates can go into effect July 1.
So theoretically, this could be brought to the second board meeting.
Correct.
Which would then put us at
The second board meeting is on May 21st.
Thank you. Okay, so that gives us some breathing room in terms of being able to put some parameters around some of the questions that we've been asking. Is that am I hearing from folks that what they're looking for is more specific information or parameters or impacts or understanding the, the risk or impacts to a limited level of additional revenue from changing things related to the rates? Ted?
John's been raising his hand very patiently, trying to say something, so I, I'm speaking up for him. John, I hope you
Appreciate it.
Get a chance.
Thank you, John. Sorry.
No, I'm sorry. I didn't, I didn't want to interrupt the, the great conversation here. It's, it's all really, really good conversation and, and you know, I'm new to this, this whole ecosystem of government, special districts. So I, I come in here with a, definitely a different view and, you know, my first take was, oh my God, we can't possibly raise the rates. This, this is a awful time to do that for people. And then I started, you know, digging in, talking to the managers, looking at the data and thinking the problem through. And so I ultimately came up with completely flipped around that I think we almost have to go through with this and, and I'll take you through sort of how I thought about it. The, the first, you all know the condition of, of our, our, our systems. I mean, it was kind of frightening when I took over and walked around that wastewater plant and then spent time out in the field with, with all the staff and managers. We have 63 miles of water lines that large part of our time is taken up just repairing leaks. The wastewater plant, I used to joke around when I first came in that it's held together with rubber bands and paper clips, not far from it. And so, you know, instead of thinking about the patient being ready for the hospitals, I like to think a bit more of we're standing over the patient with the paddles, keeping this, this patient going. And so if we didn't go through with the, with the rate change, we're, we're further pushing the can down the road on so many capital projects. And the, the enterprise funds are already concluding the, the loan from the general fund. We're a million and a half underwater already. So that means we have no reserves. So any kind of decrease in revenues will, will really have a major impact on us. And so, you know, how can we mitigate this? I've been thinking through that as well. So Cheryl brought up a great point, you know, about the, the, the labor rates. That's generally in any organization, it's anywhere from 70 to 90% of your cost. Well, we just, we renegotiated the union contracts, as you know, this past winter and, and early spring. But we embedded in that, in each union contract, the ability to reopen the discussion and the negotiation if economic conditions change. So that's our ability to go back there and have a discussion with them if we really need to. You know, our, I really would, would prefer not to do that because our staff right now, we, we have such an A1 staff across the board. We're really lucky. It's our ace in the hole right now. If, if we don't have staff coming along with us, we're really in the hurt locker. It's hard to recruit out here. It's hard to get people up to the level of training that our folks are. We're at a fairly minimal staffing. I'd say actually very minimal staffing for what we do based on trying to keep that patient alive. And I, I, my big worry is that if we're not going to continue to give resources to that staff, are they going to stick around? Now, I, I, you know, that's a hard case to decide because that's an individual decision for people. But I definitely know that some of the people have stayed on board with us knowing that we're putting the investment in to better the condition of, of the systems. And, and they like that. So anyway, just a couple of thoughts there. And then somebody, I think Dwayne asked about the SWF. We are planning on running that. We have to run that for our inflow stream analysis so we can demonstrate what the impact is to the studies for the urban water management plan and for the CDP, both, both of those studies. So that's an additional expense we're going to have this coming summer. I hope, I hope that lends some color, but yeah, it's a hard, hard decision here. I recognize. And, you know, unfortunately, we are where we are there. You know, I can't speak to all the past boards and deferred maintenance. But it's, it's not a great situation that we have. We're dealt a bad hand. Yeah, that's all I can add. Thanks.
Thank you, John.
So Mary, again, I, I mean, I'm, I'm inclined to get some data and bring it to the board. And I mean, I'm inclined to, to lean towards doing the rates, but I, but I think we need more facts and data to just share where, what the impact would be. I, I hate raising the rates, but I, I just think we're going to lose an awful lot of momentum and just shoot ourselves in the foot. And we just, it, it's a, it's a unique situation on both. It's a unique situation the district's in, but it's also a unique situation in the world. So I don't know if there's, again, any accommodation we can make to, to people who are going to struggle to pay that. Some people aren't going to struggle to pay it. So I think we need to just figure, figure out if there's a way to accommodate. I don't, I don't know. I'm just, I guess I'm leaning towards the rates, but I think we just need more meat on the bones to go on, to have the discussion with the board.
Okay. Dwayne, I think I saw your hand first.
One point, two additional point I'd like to make here is I totally understand, you know, what, what John was saying, what Mary is saying. And those points that have been brought up and how hard we have worked to get to the point where we can start actually seeing some of these capital improvement projects be finished. In other words, here's what we've got planned, here's what we've got in progress, and here's what we've done so far. And we're getting there. But by the same token, back to my earliest, you know, thoughts and consideration on this, we're in an area that we've never been in before. And we have people that are struggling now to pay their bills. And they're making, as Pam said, an effort to do that. They're trying, they're trying to pay their bills. And I think for, for the district to implement in July, the rate increases, even at these levels, the five, the 12 and the 13%, we're going to get a negative feel, you know, they're, they're going to say, you know, we just had a pretty good size increase, you know, in our waste disposal. We've had several increases in the last couple of years on these rates. And they're going to say, here we are in an economic situation like this, and you want to put this additional burden on this community? They're not going to understand. I, I think we're going to have some very negative feedback and connotations and, I, I just don't think this is the time to do that. And I understand, you know, you use it or lose it. If that's the case, you know, we can, we're flexible enough, I think we can make adjustments to this going into the future where we can still make, make things work. But I think to put this burden on this community at this time is just be totally wrong.
Well, I, I appreciate your sentiments, Dwayne. I, I, I think one thing to keep in mind too though is that this isn't something that is happening on an incremental basis that we're assuming for making some changes for, just for a year. This is a process that was voted on, that was completely available for reference for people. They, they knew what they were voting on. They knew the percentage increases. And they were willing to accept that to be able to create some stability for the district and to be able to keep us from having a major blowout in either our ability to provide water or to be able to deal with our refuse. The, the extraordinary or different part of this is what happens to be going on with the COVID and the financial items, but I think that we, we need to also not categorize what's going on is somehow this is something that's coming in up out of the blue. It's, it's a commitment that the community made in voting for this that they were willing to accept these constraints in terms of additional cost to them as rate payers to be able to get ourselves to a point of being fiscally healthy and be able to provide an infrastructure that can actually support the community. So that's, that, that's all, that's
You know, Cindy, I totally agree with everything that you've said. However, when the vote was made on the 218, as far as the community was concerned, there was none of us that could see what came to hit the, the country and the community the way this has hit. No one, no one foresaw that.
I agree.
You know, I, I, I understand what you're saying, but I, I really can't say that, that I, I just think we're going to have some, some, a lot of negative feelings from the community, you know, if, if we do this. I think that, that we have the ability going in, in, in the future, that, that we can still find ways to make happen to see the capital improvement projects going forward. Nor, it surely, I mean, it would be easier just to say, let's implement this and go on, you know, as if nothing had happened. But drive around tonight and look how this, this town's not like it was a year ago, this time a year ago. Where all the motels and all the lodging facilities were basically full. All the restaurants were going, you know, everything was hustle bustle. You drive around now, it's, it's empty. And this is a totally different times. And believe me, I would not have these feelings if, if we were not in the situation that we're in now. I just think we're going to have to show the community that we're all in this together. And we can make this work. We can come back and still get these capital improvement projects done, even if we don't get to implement this last rate increase. And I think not implementing this, this last rate increase will also keep the community behind the CCSD. And that's what I want happening. In other words, I want, we all work better as a whole. we all work better as a whole if we work together as a community, and I don't want to see us lose that. And that that that's all I've got to say.
Okay. Uh, Mary, I know you have your hand up, but I think Cheryl's was up first.
I I just have a question for Pam. Um, the emergency packet that the uh federal government has put out for losses, is there any way that we can specify the losses of the rate increase, even though it's it's a potential loss? But is there any way in there that we can submit our losses? I I have no clue. I haven't seen the form. I don't know. I'm just talking out of hypothetical, but is this is this a possibility?
Lost revenue is not recoverable at this moment.
Lost revenue, potential lost revenue.
Right. We can recover expenses for like additional protective gear that the fire department has to purchase and additional um sanitation supplies to disinfect our work areas. Most of the things that are available on FEMA right now are related to healthcare organizations. Um, there's not a lot that is recoverable on our side of the table, at least at this point in time.
But see, here's the thing. If this town should become infected, and there's a real possibility of that happening. And I would think that the employees at that district which should have their temperature taken when they come in in the morning, I don't know if you have a thermometer. I don't know what your procedure is to keep the employees safe.
Well, that's that. I think that's a different issue than than what we're talking about.
I I'm sorry, I went off, but can
That's, yeah, there are there are measures that the general manager has taken, and he can certainly address that at some other time, but
Yeah, okay.
Um, Mary, I I do want to go to you, but we're coming up awfully close to be finished with um our timeframe. What I'd like to do is take a motion to uh extend for um let's let's say another 15 minutes or half hour um so that we can uh get to a point of of having a a forward action on this, either in gathering a different additional information or making some plans for how to do that.
I move to re-extend the meeting by 30 minutes.
Thank you, Marvin. Do I hear a second?
A second.
Okay, and I was either Ted or Dwayne either, and um vote please in favor.
I.
Hands. And Marvin, is your hand? Mary, was your hand up? Okay.
But could we take a take a two minute?
Take a biology break?
That would that would be very helpful.
Okay, can we uh can we say five minutes, folks? Does that work? Okay, so five after 12?
And Cindy, there's I think public comment from the gallery.
I did see that. Thank you. And I'll I'll get to that um before we uh yeah, before we finish with their conversation in total. Thank you, John. I'm sorry, I didn't see you before. You were down on the the far end of my screen, and I was kind of
No, it's no problem. I mean, uh, it's a good conversation, good conversation all the way around. It's a really hard problem. You know, uh, and uh, yeah, it's a big challenge. You know, we could be sitting here in September and saying, oh, what was that all about? Or not. Uh, we just don't know.
Well, we'll discuss it soon, and everybody gets back.
Good to be.
Okay. Yes. Thank you. Excellent. Excellent. Thank you. All right. Bye bye. How are you, Pam? Are you eating?
I had to eat something fast.
Oh, you better. Make sure you don't
That way I don't fade away over the next half an hour.
Oh, my God, we can't have that happen. You keep him busy?
Yeah, way more than busy. Crazy.
It's crazy, huh? I have a dog that wants to go out. They go out, they're gonna start barking. That's the problem. Is that a plug in my?
Okay, we could do another couple of hours now.
I'm all plugged in, Ted, except for my dogs want to get walked. Oh. Crazy. Bella?
Come here, Bella. Glad you need to bring us lunch then. We need to have a lunch meeting.
Good plan.
Did I hear somebody say pizza?
I was doing okay until you said that. Now I have a real need. Well, we were quite quite more speedy than um than was needed for the five minutes. It appears it was a necessary break. So um I had an interesting um and something interesting to observe um this past week. I have empty lots for the most part um behind where my house is. And um directly behind it, uh there was a very large pine tree, probably easily upwards of, you know, 45 or 50 feet because it went up over the house by quite a bit at the peak. And um it also was Desa door nail, just, you know, it had been for a while, but it also was only about 10 feet beyond my back fence. And and then I'm in a regular sized lot, so it isn't like there was a whole lot of distance between what that tree was and my back porch and my dining room. So um I've been eyeing it for a while, trying to decide what to do because by going out and taking a look at the county records, the owner of the property is in France. So I thought, okay, I'm not gonna get a lot of response there. So I don't know who, why, or how it happened. But um someone came out with a weed whacker and kind of cleared the area underneath the tree and along my fence line. And took down a couple of this the lower limbs, and I thought, okay, they're just clearing it out so somebody can get in there to clear the rest of the lot. Uh, what is, which is what happened. Then the mower came in and it cleared that lot area. And then a gentleman came back uh with a chainsaw. And it cut a couple of more lower limbs, and I thought, okay, he's just clearing it out so the you know, they can um, you know, take that up and and haul it away. So turned away from it. About 10 minutes later, I hear this big crack, and I thought, oh, God, and I run to the window and this individual, single individual with a chainsaw took down this tree and laid it just nice and easy on the lot behind me. I was just flabbergasted. One person and a chainsaw and that entire tree laid on the ground. And um then it came back the next day and he cut it up and they hauled it away. And I still don't know how it happened. I don't know who to think.
And he put it down in the right direction.
He did.
That's very important.
Yes, he did. He did it quite majestically.
Excellent.
Yeah, laid it down on that cleared lot perfectly. Let's see. Marvin, are you there?
Not back yet.
Yeah, I was just thinking we're so close to it that I was thinking might be able to go ahead and get straightened out, and close my door. Some noise going on. Interesting. It's a street street sweeper. Okay, let's see. Marvin, you're back. I take it?
I am.
And John and Haley?
I'm here.
Okay. Well, it's 12:05, so let's go ahead and reconvene, uh get started here. Um. So is there anyone who has any comment, any additional comment before we go? 10?
Yeah, I I I think before before we vote, I really would like to see uh how creative we can be. You know, some some and, you know, Pam and John, you may already have done this. It just doesn't show up in the staff report. But uh there there have to be other approaches or or some kinds of approaches that could be taken to uh mitigate the immediate effect of putting the um the rates into uh, you know, raising the rates. And it, you know, so some discussion of uh, we looked at this and here here are the pros and cons. We looked at this. Here are the pros and cons. We looked at this. Here are the pros and cons. And try to get try to get as creative as possible to uh find find a workaround. I mean, you know, it's it's one of the good things about having a a smart and capable staff. There with a little brainstorming, you may come up with eight or 10 different possibilities that could that should could and should be examined and uh you know, brought back to us in in some sort of form so that we can uh we can, we can at least say, okay, you know, uh, this was this is the only course of action, or it's it's the best course of action, or uh, you know, let's avoid these five five different things, you know, because.
I think here's a crazy thought. Uh, then I get my SoCal gas bill, and every quarter, there's a credit of some kind that they've issued. Um, my car insurance, I just got a credit on my car insurance because people are driving less and the risk are less. Would it be possible to implement the rate increase and then have the Board of Directors authorize a credit to the residents for a percentage or or some part of that rate increase?
Well, it would seem that um that could certainly be one thing for conversation or to kind of hammer through or iron out to understand if there's any opportunity um there. Um, what what would let me let me ask um Jim Wildgold and Ms. Duffield. Um, is there any value of of having a in a a couple of members of the Finance Committee be able to interact with the the staff to kind of brainstorm some of these kinds of things that could be brought back for general conversation, or is that something that you feel is just more appropriate specific to being generated by just the um the staff of the district?
I think I think in general, I mean, we we're we basically need Pam needs planning guidance, you know, uh to understand under what rates uh should we craft a budget? At the end of the day, we can we'll craft a budget to make it work. The the biggest issue is gonna be um very limited to no reserves, uh because we're we're really not replenishing that. Uh, in answer to the question around the 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 uh the credit, uh, any any rebate or credit we give has to come out of the general fund. So, you know, having a different rate for different people, that gets funded through the general fund. Um, and we've already lent, you know, a considerable amount. Uh, Pam, is it a how much is it? A half a million or?
About 700,000.
Yeah, from the general fund to to enterprise funds. So, you know, that's on top of the the negative amount right now that we have. So um generally speaking, it's it's not a great option, but the the new budget, basically, uh where it's gonna hit is our infrastructure uh improvements that we have planned.
Right. So um in in thinking about um taking it to the other extreme and saying these rates were accepted and implemented. Um. In thinking of the timeframe that we're dealing with in terms of um the whole sequestering and and everything else that's going on, the building cycles um on a two month period. Um, if things were to go into effect in July, that first build is for the July-August timeframe, which would be due in September, correct?
Right. So it actually would be due in, if we build for July and August, the bills would go out around September 10th, and they would be due on October 10th.
Okay, so in terms of financials, that's kind of putting things out towards the end of the year.
Correct.
Question here. If if we implemented the rate change, but now that that complicated billing, if we implemented the rate change and it billed in September for the July-August timeframe, and things are still really, really, really bad, could the Board at that time authorize this this credit, or is it, it's done, it's done, it's in concrete, we can't touch it?
Either Mr. Whitegold or Ms. Duffield? Do we have an answer on that?
Well, I'm not sure. The Board at any time could offer a credit to any customer, but we would have to know what the impact of that credit would be. So when we have to reimburse from the general fund, it has to be like, for instance, we offer a low income discount. it has to be like, for instance, we offer a low-income discount. So because we are not giving that discount to every single one of our customers, the other ratepayers cannot subsidize that discount. So for the low-income program, we have to reimburse the enterprise fund, which is the wastewater fund where that discount is offered. The general fund has to provide that offset, but existing customers do not. If we were to provide a discount across the board to every customer, we're not giving it to one classification or another, we're just saying reducing, we're reducing our revenues in total. So that, in my eyes, would not need to come from the general fund. But the question about if we go forward and do the rate increases, and then we decide to provide a credit, it, it's just a billing nightmare, we have to pick one. We kind of need to decide going forward what we're going to do and what we're going to recommend to the board. And we don't have a lot of time if we want these to go in place on July 1st.
So, Mary?
Mary.
I, I mean, I hear what Pam's saying is, I, I, I just, I do think we need to pause and take a step back and, and recognize Pam knows better than any of us how the system works, but it, it just seems like, I mean, there, there just seems like there's got to be some way, because I think, well, two things I was going to throw out, one is, you know, the state and the government is offering different kinds of, not benefits, relief. I, I don't, I don't know, I just think that at some point, there might be something we can take advantage of at the state level that can help this situation, I don't know what it is. I just hate to pass this opportunity on the rates. Because it's, it's not just this year, it really affects the next 20 years. I mean, it's, it's not just a, so if there's some way we can mitigate a bump for six months or whatever it is, it makes a huge impact to the whole money stream. Because if you don't increase this year, you base, I mean, you just take it out, it's not just like a one-time thing. So, um, I, I just think if there's any way we can think about being creative around, you know, a little bit of both, a little bit of what can we cut back on, but, you know, maybe we don't have to raise the rates as high so we can cut back on some stuff, but to go to zero rate increase right now, I think, is pretty detrimental, might be too strong, but it, it's, it's a big impact, so I just think, and, and I'd be happy to help it, although I don't know what I can offer other than, you know, you sleep on it and maybe you come up with something else, but I just think we're, we're making a I, I think we're having a problem if we raise the rates, I agree with Dwayne, I agree with everything Cheryl and Dwayne said, but I also think we're creating a problem if we don't do, raise the rate somewhat. So I think there's some place in there, maybe we can come to a sweet spot. If we can credit people for six months, whatever it is, I just think we should take some time and think about it.
Well, I think some of the, some of the actions that have already been put into place, I, I agree with you, Mary, that I think that if we take some time and try to be creative, and by time, I mean days. You know, I'm not talking about pushing this out forever, and I think that we would probably need to get together again and have a special meeting in a selected timeframe to be able to come to some conclusion that we forward to the board for action in May. But there, there probably are some creative ways, and we've got some smart, creative people here, that we could have some conversations about things. And, and John, I don't know how much you would like to have the committee participate in those kinds of conversations with recommendations to, to you and staff, but I think it's an opportunity, is that something that you would feel would be added value for you?
Yeah, we already talked this morning at the manager's meeting about putting together scenarios for that board meeting to consider this item. My, my recommendation would be for the board to approve this, but based, let the board decide what those rates might be. It may be 1%, it could be 0%, but at least it get, would give them an option to, one way or the other, to consider either holding the rate steady or some sort of increase, and then allow the staff to provide some courses of action and scenarios of basically what we would have to cut and what the trade-offs are for that board meeting. And then additionally, we'll have a little bit more information on what our revenues are looking like, what our usage is looking like, based on this, this, this week's measurements before that board meeting. So we'll have, we'll definitely have more data to make a decision by the board meeting. But right now, you know, I, I just remind the committee that we're only seeing about 1.3% of our 4,000-plus customers that are having a, a, a situation that makes it require to have a payment schedule. So it's, it's still really super low. And maybe, maybe it will get worse, as Dwayne was pointing out, you know, over this, this period, we don't know yet. But, but so far, the data's not there to show that there's, there's a massive across-the-board significant issue yet.
Right, I, I was, I, that kind of was in the back of my mind, because I was trying to put some, some perspective to how large an issue we're trying to address. And, uh, I mean, if we were just even to think in very round terms about there being 4,000 customers for the, the enterprises, you know, 5% of that would be 200, you know, 10% of that would be 400. And we're not seeing anything like that in terms of the numbers of people so far that have indicated the kinds of issues that would put us into a real tailspin. So, you know, in, in terms of risk, are we judging on the basis of trying to equalize everything for everyone? Or do we need to be thinking in terms of how to mitigate things for those folks who may be challenged? And I'm inclined to the latter of that statement. Because I don't know that there is that large an indication of other people who will not be able to support what we've fought so long to try to achieve, to make ourselves healthy. And maybe what we need to do is start getting creative about how we assist others in the community that may be challenged.
That's right, and that's, that's my, that's our thinking on the staff as well, to handle those on a case-by-case, and we've been able to really work through those, Pam's been on the lead on that, and could probably comment a little more, but the community on a whole is, has been super supportive and, you know, we've been able to work out plans. Now, our payment plans are tougher than other districts, some other districts allow you, under their rules, to extend that payment plan for up to six months and more. We, we hold, we try to hold everybody to two months so they don't get in a further hole as the bills start to pile up.
Right, just compounds, yeah.
So we, we still have some other tools that we can utilize, you know, to get somebody by a really hard spot by even extending it, I mean, we could extend it to a year, for that matter, and if, if, if it's a point in time where, where someone's having an issue, so you know, I, I definitely still have tools to do that.
So rather than trying to strive for a single answer to this, it sounds like what we have the chance to do is get with some creative thinking, maybe find some different ways to approach it, and by thinking of the three different elements that we're talking about in terms of rates and the things that really need to be satisfied, we can come up with some additional suggestions.
Yeah, we do have, we do have reserve, you know, a healthy reserve in the administrative at the Abbott Fund, so that's, that's good news at the end of the day, because that's where we would have to go to help people out.
So, um, I, I guess what I'm starting to, to recognize is that we, we're not going to come to an ultimate vote today. And that what we need to do is even potentially have a meeting of the committee as a whole to try to a, along with staff, I mean, just as a brainstorming session, to perhaps look at or consider some other alternatives that we could move forward as a recommendation to the board, is, is that, am I hearing that from the rest of the committee?
Yeah.
We can't do a brainstorming session as a committee, as a whole committee. That's a, that's a ground act violation. So, you know,
That may have been the wrong term to use, yeah.
Yeah, we would have to do it in this setting, but
Right, exactly.
Still do it, it would just have to be public, that's all.
Right.
But, you know, I, I think if, if I were, if I were trying to work on scenarios, I would be talking to Tim Carmel about what degrees of freedom we have from, from a legal standpoint vis a vis Prop 218, vis a vis the, you know, flexibility in managing our, our implementation. I think in terms of staff, I, I, I know Pam, you're under the gun for doing a lot of things, and I hear you saying that X, Y, and Z would be billing nightmares, but quite frankly, it's, it's, it may be part of sharing the pain to volunteer for, for a billing nightmare, because you know, I, I honestly think a large portion of our population is going to be far worse off in July than they are today. And, you know, these, these things are going to just compound. Cambria's entire economic engine is tourism. There are no tourists, so the economic engine has been turned off. And there's some delay before that, that impact may get down to the individual person, but you know, everybody that depends on Cambria's economy is going to be running out of, of cash flow, running out of options given time, and, and there's nothing that I see in the return to quote-unquote "normal" that suggests tourism is going to come back to our community in the foreseeable future. If it does, it's going to be in very small doses. And so, so I, I think, you know, trying to, trying to steer the, steer the aircraft carrier based on the data that we have today as opposed to projecting forward would be, would be probably mistaken, because this, this is going to be a very hard-hit place. You know, just, there's no way to avoid it. And so, you know, it's going to be painful, it's going to be painful for all of us living here, and I think it'll be painful for the district. The question is, how, how can we help each other? And particularly, you know, just stepping forward as if there isn't something that's a problem, I think would be inappropriate.
Madam Chairman, we're running out of time, should we entertain a motion to extend further?
We're going to have to, because we're, this is unresolved at this point, thank you, Marvin, so I'll take a motion for extension for another, till quarter of one.
So moved.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Aye.
Thank you, Marvin.
I'm speaker.
So, we're not dealing with an easy or simple situation here, it's got a lot of different layers. And there isn't going to be one answer that's going to work, obviously. It's going to have to be any, any number of items that we're going to have to probably use as a recommendation. So that being said, any suggestions from anyone on the best path forward to, to take us forward on this, Cheryl?
I do have a suggestion, let Mr. Wildgold go back to his department heads and let them give a actual idea of what is needed to get us through this season, maybe it's not an 8% rate increase, maybe it's a 3% rate increase, let them do their homework, let them come back to us. And, and then, you know, maybe you'll have a special meeting in, 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 in a couple of weeks, and then put it, put it together as a package so it can be submitted to the board. Maybe it won't be all three categories, maybe one category, but let's see what's out there, let their department heads do their job and let Mr. Wildgold do his job. That's my suggestion.
And after that, Mary? Just to maybe, I don't know, add or soften, because I think they are doing their jobs, I don't, and I don't think Cheryl's implying they're not. So I just wanted to put that out there. I think the only question really is, is for Mr. Wildgold, if he wants some help, because I think, you know, do you want anybody on the committee to help on the subcommittee, I think that's really the only question, because I think, I, I would encourage you to do what Cheryl said, it's just what, what are the options to reduce, but also what are the options to have other billing cycles, what are the options to, because I do think our, our community is going to be hurt, but I think we have to maybe assess what percentage of that community, because I, you know, it is a retirement community, and it is, there are a lot of wealthy people here that can afford this, so I, I don't, I don't know, just put it out there, I mean, it's not everybody that's, everybody's hurt, but everybody, everybody, some people are hurt worse. It's like across the country, so if there's a way to assess that and to help those people, I think that's an option, and, and talking to Tim Carmel about the Prop 18, so I think to me, it's, it's really backed more to the staff and John's team, and then just a matter of what assistance you would like, and I think we're all willing to help if you want any help.
Well, it's an easy answer, Mary, I'll definitely take help, I never turn it down.
Okay, so
Yeah, I would love to, I'll huddle with the managers, I think Cheryl's got a great idea, you know, it's a great staff, it's, it's a very innovative staff. And so let us go back and crunch some things, really, I think overall, it comes down to risk. And the risk is, you know, how much, how much do we want to wait on some of the deferred maintenance issues that we got to go, I mean, that's really where the throttle is on this, I think, overall. But let us, I, I mean, and that's our utility manager, district engineer, that's going to tell me, hey, you know what, these pumps can wait, this part can wait, but we gotta do, you know, you know, our switchboard issue without the grounded system right now is destroying multiple pumps a year at the tune of $10,000 to $20,000 a pump. You know, we're actually saving money by fixing that thing, so these are the kind of trade-offs that, that I got to work with them on, and you know, it's kind of you have to spend some money to make some money, but we could defer some of the repairs by fixing that, for example. So, but let me have a, I'll have a conversation with those, and then I think it would be worthwhile, we can do a subset of a couple of members of the committee here perhaps, or we can do the whole committee, and we just all huddle again, and and Pam and I, I can get all the managers on a call, and we can have a little working session, just kind of talk through this.
Well, it's, I, I do think that perhaps a subcommittee could be a little more, a little ad hoc committee from the, from the finance committee to, could be a little more agile and interfacing with the staff. And perhaps handle some of that brainstorming or considerations. And then bring it back to the committee as a whole for discussion that would put us in a position of being able to make the recommendation to the board. It's just that the timing could be, it's got to be closer to now than then. Because we don't have weeks to deal with this. So it's going to be something that pretty much has to come out of the chute.
Yeah, I think if we did that, I'll, I'll ask Pam. And then I want to remind the committee chairman that Karen Dean's got some public comment or vice chairman of the RNI. She may have some interesting information to add.
I agree. Thank you. Okay, so actually before we, before we move on to a recommendation on the ad hoc committee. Let's do that. Let's go ahead and, oh, let's see in terms of candidates. So.
I would, I would reiterate Mary and Ted's suggestion that someone consult with, with our attorney on what the options are. But our latitudes might be under Prop 218. Who that appropriate person would be. I'm looking at your picture though.
What's our next meeting?
Well, hang on just a second. Karen has a, has a comment that she had.
Karen's on? Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm here. Okay, I had a couple of questions. If the board passes the rate increase in June, does it have to take effect July 1st? Or can the board decide to postpone the implementation of the rate increase until a little bit further on in the fiscal year, say halfway through the fiscal year? If we don't have this rate increase at all, our infrastructure is going to suffer. I mean, we have a lot of things that need to be done, especially in wastewater. And if they don't pass this rate increase ever, that's it. I mean, we can't go back and do it again without another Prop 218. The people in this community I know are having a difficult time right now. And perhaps if the rate increase passes, but the implementation is postponed a while, that could help. I'm just, I'm especially concerned about wastewater. People need to still be able to flush their toilets and get the stuff to go where it needs to go. We need to keep our systems working. But I know it's a burden on people at the moment. I just wondered if there was a possibility that if it passed, if it can be delayed in when it took effect.
Thank you, Karen. I, that, that is certainly something for consideration. I think that the other side of that coin is if there's a consideration for delay that maybe rather than having the, the actual delay, that a reduction in the rate that might be implemented could satisfy the same effect, but at least would still maintain some level of revenue. That would be coming in that would help to sustain whatever activities or updates or maintenance is in the pipeline. Ted?
The implementing a smaller increase to try to mirror the impact of a delay ends up being a permanent problem. Where a delay is a temporary problem. So, you know, we, we really, this, this is exactly the kind of thing that we should be talking to Tim Carmel about. Because it, it gets into what, what are the legal opportunities that a special district has? I, I am positive that I do not know the answer to that. And, you know, I'm, I'm guessing at least on our committee, there probably isn't anybody who knows either. Pam may, John may, but, you know, I've always found that if you start scratching lawyers hard enough, you'd find ideas underneath the, the places you've been scratching. So I, you know, I would, I would really encourage trying to go and spend some time with, with him to creatively think about what we can do to mitigate.
Okay, so I guess, Mary?
Sorry, I went the wrong way. Are we at a point where I can make a motion to, to go to, to do what we're saying?
Yeah, yeah. In terms of their, what establishment of an ad hoc committee to support. Let's say, John, you, you have your hand up. I.
I just, I wanted to add one quick item. I, I do have an answer on a question of can the Prop 218 be delayed? And the answer from the attorney is yes.
Okay.
Well, that's good.
Okay, it, it can be delayed for the fiscal year. It can't be recovered or applied in a following year.
That's fine. It can be delayed. Okay.
Okay.
It can be delayed by a couple of months.
Right.
So, okay, there's no gun to your head.
So, Mary, again, sorry.
Well, I think the, the motion is to establish an ad hoc committee to, to, no, to, to ask John and his staff to go off and do their thing. And then if we want to identify an ad hoc committee that can work with them. But I guess we need to identify the committee before we have the motion. We're gonna run out of time again.
Considering that, you know, it's like the old stepping forward, considering you step forward with it, are you volunteering for that?
I will, if that's what's needed, sure.
Okay. Ted, you certainly have a lot of financial background and experience in those kinds of things. Is there, would there be a possibility of your being interested in doing something like that also?
I could have my arm twisted.
Okay, so I'm assuming that there would be the two members of the committee. So I guess the first motion is the formation of an ad hoc committee that would be supportive to the staff as necessary to determine the application of the rates as a recommendation to the board. Is that?
Sounds to me, and I, I saw a move.
Yeah, okay. Do I hear a second?
I'll second. Thank you, Mary. Okay, all those in favor? I.
Cheryl and Dwayne? Cheryl?
No.
Okay, so that is a four one. All right.
Our second motion is to establish a, another committee meeting early May sometime when we get the results of this.
I, I would say yes. I think that we probably, we'd just call it as a special meeting. And that it wouldn't be something that we'd have to cast some concrete at this time. Because we, we know our deadlines in terms of being able to meet the, at, at the most extent, the second board meeting in May. But some of that has to do with John being able to interface with his staff also. And so, and then the ad hoc committee. So I don't know if we're in a position to actually establish a date for that additional meeting at this point, but that would be the expectation. Does that make sense?
Cindy, I did receive another request for public comment.
Oh, okay. Then if that's the case, we need to extend our meeting. Do I hear a motion?
I move, we extend.
Okay, should we shoot for about 15 minutes for one o'clock? Do I hear a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Uh, thank you, Haley. And so, let's see, the, who is the individual who?
The individual is Tina Dickinson.
Thank you. Go ahead, Tina.
Yeah, thank you, Cindy. And I just have one comment. I just got in on this meeting about five minutes ago. And I heard about, something about referring to legal counsel from, I think, Mr. Seidler. One thing for sure, under Prop 218, the, the board can choose to lower rates. It cannot, however, in choose to increase any rate that was already proposed and voted upon in that three-year rate increase or any other Prop 218 rate decrease that, that was proposed by and voted upon by the board. And I don't think that's something you would even be considering, but that I do know. And, but lowering them is possible. And, and the delay is, as General Manager Michael said, I don't know that it's two months. I, I think that, I'm not exactly sure that that is the case. I think that's something that you'd all have to just, I mean, get something back from Mr. Carmel. But I do think, and I heard Ms., Ms. Pearson speaking. And I think, no, sorry, Ms. Dean. And I do think that maybe if it were to be delayed, might be helpful under the current circumstances. So again, thank you for allowing me a chance to talk.
Certainly. Thank you, Ms. Dickinson. And, and just for point of reference for you, there were conversations earlier in the meeting that talked to the recognition of the constraints of 218. And also, I think probably the reference to two months had to do as a reference point for the billing period. And so that would be in a two-month increments of, say, 246, something like that. So that's why the two-month was something as a reference point. Okay. So we have an ad hoc committee. We have Mr. Weigold going back to pulse his staff in terms of suggestions or cause and effect to implementation of the rates or the level of the rate implementation. And then in touching base with them and getting feedback of when information can be brought back to the committee, we'll establish a special meeting. And the result of that special meeting will be the recommendation that we'll be able to take forward to the board for their second meeting in May. Does that all pretty much sum, sum up where people were hearing things going?
It's the way I heard it.
Okay. Good. I just wanted to make sure.
Got it.
Okay, just wanted to make sure.
Cindy, who are the ad hoc members?
Mary Maher and Ted Seidler.
Thank you.
And John, do you feel comfortable with the path forward you want to take with your staff? Or having heard anything that the committee's made recommendation on, that you need any additional feedback from us before you move forward?
I don't think so. I'll just, I'll just need to determine when the earliest date might be when we'll have any kind of information on the meter reads. That's the biggest data input for us of, because we really only have production numbers to go by. And I'll have those here in two days, month of April. That'll show how much water was used. But the, but the billing meter reads will, will tell us who's used it.
Okay. And in the, in the meantime, with those as, as data points, there probably are some just general conversations with staff. I assume that you'd be able to have to identify what kind of risks might be associated with.
That's right. I already, I already told them this morning to, you know, they, they've already had those. But now they're, you're pulling them back out to, to take a look at them as, as it relates to the budget discussion. So, so they're, they already know that to pull that together. Now I just have to tell them the timetable's moving up a little even faster.
Okay. Ms. Duffield, before, before we close this out, is there anything additionally that the committee can offer to you in, in terms of what's going on? Is there anything that you need from us?
Yeah, but I just want to talk about the billing timeline real quick. So they're going to be reading meters over the next three days. And we'll be digesting that information into our financial system all of next week. So the soonest I will have billing information will be sometime the 7th or the 8th of May. So it's the latter part of next week, Thursday to Friday, before I would have any information that I could share.
Okay. So I just want to confirm with you also, you know, in a timeline of billing, the July, August timeframe for meter read would then represent a billing that would go out in September, correct?
Around September 10th.
With payment due in October?
Correct.
Okay. So for any rate increase that may end up being implemented, the first impact that in terms of people's pocketbooks per se would be in October in the fall. Okay. All right. Is there anything else that anyone has that they, I think that we've, I think we've covered all of the agenda items. Let me look. Right.
Future agenda?
Just the future agenda items. Any additional agenda, future agenda items other than the potential for this special meeting that we would have in addressing what the rates structure might be?
We're going to have to talk about budget at some point in the relatively near future. And, you know, I, I think it's, it would be our May regular meeting to be able to feed back in time for getting a, you know, any revisions done before the board has to start considering the budget.
Right. And the, the reality in, in that point of interest would also be that it'd be a budget built on whatever decisions end up coming out of the, the rate impacts too.
So I'd suggest that be the topic for the regular May meeting. And I think we have to plan on having both a special meeting and a regular meeting in May.
I agree. Okay. So unless anyone else has something for any of future agenda items and unless there is any other attendee request for speaking, I would say that that takes care of our business for today. Thank you all for your commitment today and for the additional amount of time that it's taken and for your willingness to try to contribute as, as, as much creativity as possible that we can to the circumstances. Because it obviously is a difficult decision-making process. And your concern and dedication to making it be the best kind of decision it can be is very much appreciated. So with that being said, I think we've concluded the business for this meeting unless I have, hear anything from anyone else. All right. Meeting adjourned, folks. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks.